Good evening. The July 26, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary call for roll to determine if a quorum present, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Fisher.
Here.
Vice Chair Harland.
Here.
Commissioner Bruman.
Here.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Here.
Commissioner La Paglia. Let the record reflect, all members are present with the exception of La Paglia with an excused absence.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Harland is going to address it.
All body of people, please rise. Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harland. We'll now be moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Can I call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call for us.
Chair Fisher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Public comments. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll be now moving on to the approval of minutes portion of the agenda. We're going to approve the minutes of April 26 and May 10, 2023, regular Planning Commission meeting as presented. Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the approval of the minutes?
Thank you, Chair. We do not have any members of the public requesting to speak.
I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve these minutes.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second. Can we move on to a vote, please?
Chair Fisher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now, for the first item on our agenda, Electrical Vehicle Charging and Housing Element Implementation Ordinance. And I believe the staff member will be giving that presentation to us.
Yeah, Chair Fisher. With us tonight is Associate Planner Taylor Graeble for the presentation on this item.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, I'll be presenting on the EV and Housing Implementation Ordinances, MCA 2023-0001. So first, the agenda. We'll start off with the background, and then we'll be covering the two different parts, EV parking requirements, housing implementation, and then looking at some changes that have happened since this was seen before you last. So a little bit of background. We presented this item to you all last month, and it was continued. Following that meeting, there was a workshop where we discussed the Climate Action Plan and the Housing Element. At that meeting, we covered how both of these plans are part of the general plan. They were reviewed and by the Planning Commission and then approved by City Council. Within both of these documents are a set of policies and policy action items that need to be taken to implement them. And we're here today because we're implementing different parts of both plans. First, we'll start off with the EV parking requirements. As we discussed, there are some specific implementation measures that the city said it's going to take to implement the goals of our Climate Action Plan. And tonight, I highlighted for us cap measure T-2. When it's combined with T-1 above, you'll see that it actually has a really significant impact on reducing the number of or the amount of GHG emissions in our community. So, as I mentioned, we're here because these proposed ordinance would be implementing the policy T-2 and then aligning us with the green building standards. And you'll find that actually, a lot of these items are just making clear in our development code what's required by applicants through the green building code. So we're sort of hoping that it'll make things maybe a little more clear for them up front, but a lot of these things they'd have to do anyways. And as you'll see, we're updating definition standards and requirements. So these definition updates are really just bringing us along with the green building standards. These standards have to do with like the paving and signage and some of the improvement requirements. So again, this is just aligning with existing standards. And then here's the place where there's a little bit of a difference between the green building code and what we're proposing. Because as we spoke at our last workshop, we kind of need to go above and beyond what's required to really hit that cap implementation measure. So what we're proposing is having the installation of a level-two charger in garages, where right now plumbing's required, so we're saying you need to add that level-two charger. And then for multifamily projects, typically 5% of the parking spaces would need to be EV-ready spaces. And we're saying, let's make that 6% instead. So if we're talking about 100, a development that requires 100 parking spaces, we need to do six instead of five. Next to our Housing Element Implementation. On the left-hand side, you'll see the general actions that we're seeking to take. And on the right-hand side, the specific policies that these actions are implementing. And really, this is to implement Policy Action 1-9, which was something that we said we would do as part of our Housing Element. So we're here to implement that policy action. So as I mentioned, implementing Policy Action 1-9, others are going to bring us into compliance with existing state law and then also meeting Housing and Community Development, HCD, comments that we've received throughout the process. So we're looking at, we're proposing to reduce the minimum lot size from five acres to one acre for the multifamily zones, removing subjective language from Reasonable Accommodation Section 16.73, aligning our code with state law that requires manufactured housing be permitted in all residential zones, removing enclosed parking requirements for multifamily housing and condominiums, removing subjective language from conditional use permit findings for residential development. Then lastly, modifying parking standards to meet state law regarding emergency shelter parking. So there was kind of one big change between what we brought to you last time and now what's being presented to you today. And that has to do with the conditional use permits findings. So originally, the proposed modifications were going to apply to both residential and non-residential uses. But we provided a revised set of language that would meet HCD's requirements to remove subjectivity from residential conditional use permits, but retain the ability, the city's ability to regulate non-residential conditional uses. So here's staff's recommendation. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask us. We also have Andy Krog up here, our building official, and he could help with specific building questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Very well done. Are there any questions from any members up here? One question from Mr. Commissioner Wojciech.
Thank you. I think at the last time we talked about this, and I believe it was Commissioner Bruman that brought it up, we were talking about the five-acre minimum, and staff was suggesting one acre. And then we said, well, why not two? Why not three? Why are we settling on one? I don't remember where that wound up. If we said one was all right, or if we're going to come back and look at that, or if you can refresh my recollection, it'd be appreciated.
No, thank you, Commissioner. I recall that we provided some responses that we were very unique as a city, having such a large minimum lot size, that in the regional area, we're an outlier. We feel that one acre is the appropriate acreage minimum, as I recall. But I don't recall any specific direction on that. We just wanted to provide you some backdrop on that goal.
And I would add, even bringing it down to one acre, we'll still have the largest minimum lot size for multifamily zoning, probably in Western Riverside County. I think the next lowest typical lot size, I think Riverside City, is about 32,000 that they do for multifamily. And most other jurisdictions are much lower. So I would say, you know, we're hoping that we can drop it to one acre, and that's enough for HCD, but we'll find out. We submit this ordinance to HCD for their blessing. So we'll see. It might not be low enough, but we're hoping that's acceptable.
Thank you. Any other questions from the DAS? Yes. Commissioner Harland?
Thank you for the report. On the multifamily language, we're providing developer flexibility moving from garage requirements to spaces, correct? So as it relates to EV availability, reserved spaces, secure access, open access, if everything's open, will that be taken as a one-off as far as executing that with each proposal that comes in? Does that make sense?
Not following the question, Commissioner. Are we talking about, so on multifamily projects, now that they don't have to have a garage, do they still have to have EV spaces? Is that what we're asking?
Correct.
They do, yes. It's still a requirement for them to have them pursuant to the green building code.
And then whether that's reserved, secure, et cetera, that'll all be discussed as each project comes up?
Right. It would depend on the project, the project's design, whether or not they have garages. Andy Krog can add a little bit to that. Our building official's an expert on these kind of things.
Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, so EV is required based on the type of spaces. So there will be EV requirements for garage spaces, EV requirements for covered spaces, non-covered spaces, whether it's guest or assigned spaces. So each one of those will be covered under the green building code table. So they have to give me a matrix of what each space is, and then they have to follow for each of those spaces with the green building requirements for the EV chargers.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, I'd like to have a motion in a second for this. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You got it?
Should be open to public comments. Are there any public comments for this particular project?
Seeing none.
Seeing none? Then I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to, number one, receive the staff presentation. Number two, recommend adoption of the City Council the notice of exemption, finding the project is exempt from SEQA. And number three, adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta Recommending That the City Council Authorize the Filing of the Environmental Determination and Approved Development Code Amendment", related to Code Section 16.08.010, Code Section 16.44.115, 16.44.200, 16.52.040, and 16.73.050.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, can we take a roll call for approval?
Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on, moving on to our second presentation this evening. Is the staff presenting? Thank you.
Yes, Chair Fisher. Just one second while we can get that loaded up here.
Okay. Can't find it.
So I'll kick this item off. Second item is a public hearing on the multifamily residential and mixed-use residential objective design standards. I'm the City Planner Carl Steele up here. Down and below, we have Associate Planner Taylor Graeble and our consultant team for Placeworks, Alan Loomis and Molly Mendoza. This item, just a little context for those who may not know this item, is our objective standards. We've previously had multiple workshops with the commission on this item, so it should be somewhat familiar to the commissioners. And we're looking to move this forward to the City Council. So next slide. So just a little bit of background. We did adopt an urgency ordinance on this item. So I'd say 95% of the objective standards in front of the commission are already adopted and in place. The City Council adopted them sort of while we were on public review, right after we saw you guys at a workshop. So they are effective. And so we've made some tweaks to them. We'll talk about that tonight in the presentation. And then we have an ordinance in order to fully implement our housing element that'll be part of it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alan and continue the presentation.
Do we have the staff report, please?
Yes. So thank you, Commissioners. My name's Alan Loomis from Placeworks. As Carl mentioned, we are a consultant to the city staff in this project. So overview of our agenda. I'll do a refresher on the objective design standards, what they are. Then I'll turn it over to my colleague Molly Mendoza to speak about the community input we've had since we saw you last and kind of a quick overview of the document revisions. And then back over to city staff to talk about the process and the recommendation the Planning Commission is being asked to move tonight. So ODS or Objective Design Standards is a kind of refresher. First of all, you'll recall that actually producing objective design standards is one of the implementation measures from your housing elements. So we're following through on that. Our work as the city's consultant is being paid for with a LEAP grant provided by the state of California. So it's, there's no general fund money coming to our, to funding our contract. So that's a kind of benefit to the city. Adopting objective design standards also fulfills mandates, notably SB 35 of various kind of state laws related to accelerating housing production that all cities in California are obligated to undertake. So you are not alone in needing to adopt objective design standards. Every city in the state is undergoing this, including cities directly next door to you. A key component of this, as it comes down from the state law, is that it desires to have an administrative review process for qualifying SB 35 projects, meaning that if the project has a certain percentage of affordability, and it's kind of a ratio depending on kind of the nature of the city, then you are obligated to do an administrative review, that is a staff-level review without Planning Commission hearings, for those qualifying projects. And you are not able to deny projects unless you have objective design standards. So as a reminder, standards that say, "Projects shall be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood," are not objective. That's a very subjective language, but language that says, "If you are adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, your property should step back 35 feet and be no higher than 40 feet." That's very clear, objective, measurable standards, and that's what we're after. It's important to say that objective design standards really set the minimum standard of quality. No objective design standards or any kind of design standards that could be adopted by a city is ever going to give you architectural excellence. Architectural excellence is the product of excellent architects and clients. And the city really can just set the minimum bar for what is acceptable. But you're always going to want to ask for more, I think. I think the state would have been perfectly happy if every city had, like, basically adopted the objective design standards process, a set of standardized plans for apartments that could just be stamped out over and over and just repeat that, you know, module completely. But, you know, this is Marietta in California. It's not, you know, Khrushchev, you know, Moscow. So the objective design standards we're proposing is not a one-size-fits-all development. It's very nuanced and has a lot of flexibility. And then on the last bullet, I'll skip that because we have a map to talk about where the supply is within the city limits. Principally, when we initially got started on this, the goal was to have this apply to the downtown specific plan, where you allow multifamily, the TOD overlay zone, where also you allow multifamily, and then your multifamily residential zones, including the new one, created as a result of the housing element. While we were working on this, the state passed yet more laws and said that now, and your, any zone in the state that allows for commercial development can also allow by right housing development, assuming it's got this affordability equation, and must be approved using these objective design standards. So midpoint in our process, we suddenly had to expand the geography. So your current commercial zones and your office and innovation zones are now places where the objective design standards would apply, provided somebody comes in with a qualifying housing development on a site within one of those zones. It's largely geared towards your multifamily zones and the downtown and the TOD zone. The document itself is fairly straightforward in the way it's structured. There's a kind of overview of the purpose. There's some general standards that are really kind of site planning issues. Then we talk about the design standards as they relate to building types, which is largely geared towards the height. Most of what we expect to see in Marietta is going to be three stories or less. So there's a lot of discussion about buildings of that height. But your zoning code does allow buildings taller than three stories in particular locations. So we ended up having a section that deals basically with four stories up to about six stories. And then it is theoretically possible under your zoning code that somebody would come in with a high-rise construction if over seven stories or over six stories, which then means they're in a world of steel or concrete construction. And so we did address that possibility under the Chapter III of Building Types. And then a substantive portion of the document is geared towards defining desirable architectural styles in the community. So you'll recall, there's a number of different architectural styles, and any new development under these standards needs to be developed using one of those, one or more of those architectural styles. And as was discussed at the previous workshop, and a key kind of idea is that the architectural styles don't apply everywhere. There's a kind of mixture. So certain styles are appropriate in the downtown, some are appropriate in the office zones, and some are appropriate in the multifamily neighborhoods that are kind of about, kind of closer to the sort of pure residential neighborhoods. So it's a kind of mixing of how those styles can apply. And so Chapter IV deals with that. And then finally, there is a standards compliance checklist, which is a tool both to put applicants on notice that they are responsible for checking off the boxes and kind of being held accountable to these standards, and then also a tool for staff to be able to sort of review projects in a pretty effective manner. So relative to the next steps, I'll turn it over to my colleague Molly.
Thank you. Okay, so since we were lost here, we did some more community outreach. So I'm going to go over, you know, what we've done and then some of those key takeaways. So last time we were here for the workshop, we had done an online survey. This is something that we had released really at the beginning of the developing the objective design standards. So this was available from November to February of this year. This was really just to get a general understanding of key preferences that the community had. And so this survey focused on architecture and design, as well as open space and mobility. And then it gathered some key demographic information. So we were really hoping to understand, you know, who's taking the survey, who's really interested in this topic. This survey gathered a total of 56 responses. And then since then, we did, you know, one more stretch of community outreach. We came and we talked with you, the commissioners, and, you know, something that we heard was, you know, we want to reach out to the community a little bit more on this and really make sure that they know what we're doing and hear their feedback. So on Thursday, May 18, we had a booth at the Market Nights. And here, we just shared key information about the draft document. So at this point, we did have the public draft available. It was available online, but we also did have a printed copy at the booth. And, you know, we kind of just tracked people down and tried to talk to them about objective design standards, get them interested, try to gather key preferences. And we also developed a survey for this booth. So we had a print survey that people could take in person. And Taylor and I really walked people through that process, helped them understand, answered a lot of questions about the intentions of objective design standards. And then the survey was also available online. And so this survey focused on design, as well as recreational amenities. And then we did have some questions about site planning preferences. And this survey gathered a total of 36 responses. So some of the key takeaways from this outreach are probably going to be unsurprising. There is a preference for Spanish Colonial Revival and Craftsman style. The community really felt that this was the most consistent for Marietta, as well as just the most pleasing to look at. And this was followed by American Mercantile and Farmhouse being, you know, second choice for architectural design preference. There is a large community interest in more walking, hiking, and biking trails. So a really big focus on mobility that can be incorporated into some of these larger developments, as well as a preference for open space to be provided centrally. So on the slide here, you see that second survey that we released at Market Nights. It's pretty straightforward. It's pretty simple. But we did have question number three, which really showed three different types of site planning for where open space, shared open space can be provided. And so that preference was that first one right there, central open space. And then lastly, we asked about key recreational amenities that community members might like to see, and the community would use and would enjoy dog parks, parks, walking trails, and playgrounds to be incorporated into new developments. And so with this community feedback, also with, you know, discussions with the City Council, as well as discussions with you, the commissioners, we did have some key document revisions. So since you last saw the document and you last saw that public draft, there are two key changes. So both of them are actually related to where styles are permitted. The first one is styles that are permitted in the innovation, office, and commercial zones. So previously, we had permitted modern and farmhouse in all three of these zones. So wherever innovation, office, and commercial zones allow or require the ODS, it was specific to modern and farmhouse. What we heard back was, you know, it would be important to include Spanish Colonial Revival, as this is really consistent with some of the commercial buildings that already exist in this city, and also preferential as far as design. And then something else that we heard was to really limit where modern was going to be permitted in the city, as it's not very consistent. And so some of the major revisions to this section are that we revised to allow modern only in the office, innovation, and TOD districts. And then the second part of this is that areas that are zoned for office that are south or west of Jefferson Avenue or abutting to Jefferson Avenue are limited to the three downtown specific plan styles or farmhouse. So that's the Spanish Colonial Revival, Craftsman, or American Mercantile, as well as the farmhouse. So those were some of the key changes to those innovation, office, and commercial zones. And then the second key change, also related to where styles are permitted, is styles that are permitted adjacent to the downtown specific plan. And this one is really just for consistency. Previously, we had just permitted architectural style based on zone. And so what we had kind of talked about internally, and we had discussed, I think, with you and the City Council, is that we really wanted to make that downtown specific plan consistent with the adjacent properties. And so we revised the document so that any of the properties that abut the downtown specific plan, so any of the properties on Ivy, Calmia, Jefferson, and Hayes, plan, so any of the properties on Ivy, Calmia, Jefferson, and Hayes, are required to also do those downtown specific plan styles. So this includes, again, the Craftsman, the Spanish Colonial Revival, and the American Mercantile styles. So those were some of the big changes. There are also other minor changes that have been made to the document, so we did want to go over these with you. First is just consistency with the housing element, something that we went back and really had to take a good hard look at and make sure that we were being consistent with the housing element, is revising language, requiring enclosed and covered parking. So as a part of the city's housing element, I think this requirement was completely removed. And so we went back and we had to revise the language in the ODS to ensure that we weren't, through the objective design standards, requiring any sort of enclosed or covered parking. And then the second change that is a little bit more simple, but definitely necessary, is just standard cleanup of the document. So we went through, we wanted to make sure that all the language is very clear. As Alan mentioned, these are objective standards, so we want to make sure that there's no questions about what's required. So clarifying language, just some grammar cleanup, visual and graphic cleanup, making sure that what we're representing is consistent with the required standards, and then formatting consistency. So that's kind of the overall adjustments that were made to the document. I don't think you'll see those as much as you will notice those changes to the styles. And then with that, I'm going to pass it over to Taylor to go over that ministerial process.
Thank you. So one of the other major items that are before you as part of this proposal is the adoption of a ministerial process or administrative process. It's called the same thing, it gets a little confusing. So really, the reason why this is being done is because it's called out in our housing element, and it specifically relates to six policies, and then there's three policy action items that this helps incorporate as well. So we're getting a lot of bang for our buck for this action. Policy action one dash eight, you'll see towards the end, we're really implementing that. Then with, I'll cover this a little bit more in detail later, but just safe to say, we're addressing these policy actions with the site. So what's the ministerial process? On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see our Level Two flow chart, and this is from the city's processing guidebook. This is something we give to applicants when we're working with them, and it's going to look something very similar to the flow chart you see up here. So what would first happen is the project, the applicant comes with a submittal for pre-application. So that'd kind of be like cycle one up there, but instead would say pre-application. And as part of that process, staff, which means planning staff, building, fire, landscaping, police, all the review, all the different parts of our city that do review of development, would have the chance to look at the project. We'd have too many meetings on it, and then after about thirty days, we would provide a letter with some condition, potential conditions, and if they could move through with the process or not. Then they would bring in a development plan to the front counter, where primarily planning would review what was being submitted for its compliance with the design standards that we're proposing today. And as part of this process, there would be no CEQA review or public notice or public hearing, and this would be a director-level decision. So after this approval of just those items that the ODS look at, there would be further plan checks done by building, fire, landscaping, grading plans. So there's quite a few permits that would follow afterwards. And that's, again, where all the departments would be looking in more detail at the project as a whole. And then planning, we'd be there making sure that what we approved at the very beginning is being reflected throughout the process. So when could this actually happen? It would be in the TOD or the downtown specific plan if a project was proposing twenty percent or more of their units to be affordable to low-income households. Or it would be the cases under state law, which is, which would, it would be the cases under state law where it would be just approved now. And that's part of the reason why it's so important we adopted these standards. So all other housing projects would need to follow the current existing development plan review process that we have now. And then the, quote-unquote, "normal" projects are the ones that are using this ministerial process, would also need to meet the ODS standards that we have, that we're creating as well.
All right. So I'll bring it back up here. So generally, we're bringing forward the objective standards for recommendation to you to council. So next slide, and the ordinance for the ministerial process. So the recommendation is that commission receive our presentation and adopt a resolution recommending the city council record and file, give staff direction, record and file the notice of exemption, adopt the ordinance for the final multifamily residential mixed use objective design standards, and we'll bring that forward to council when ready. And we're all four of us available for questions from the commission.
Thank you for the staff presentation and from PlaceWorks' presentation. Appreciate it very much. And we'll bring it back up to the dais. Any of commissioners have any questions for the staff?
No.
No questions, just comment. I appreciate the presentation and the design standard changes.
I appreciate the, and we talked last time around, you know, fifty-six replies initially, right? And, you know, basically, this feedback helps kind of drive what the recommendations are in your presentation, impressive, the specifics and the guidelines. So thank you for that. How many hours was the market night? You mentioned one, one day.
I think we were there, I think I was there for like three to four hours. So we set up around four or five PM and stayed till like eight PM.
Definitely did some hunting, because that's about forty percent of the total number came from that one night, so well done. Did you find any of those thirty-six responses that came out of the market night, were those consistent with what you saw earlier with the fifty-six? Was there any variances that came out of that, or ahas, or pivots?
Nothing really. So a lot of the questions were pretty consistent with the first survey focusing on the architectural styles and then also recreational amenities. Those were very consistent, right? Really, people really preferred the Spanish Colonial and the Craftsman. The new question that we did add in there was the site planning question, because we did want to kind of understand, you know, how people viewed that shared open space and where they might like to see it. And that was pretty consistently across the board. People really liked to see it centrally located. We even talked through that with a few people and kind of understanding, like, you know, what are the pros to cons to different option, pros and cons to different options? But it was quite unanimous.
I think, and I would also offer, I think we've heard clearly from both the city council and then in follow-up meetings, in talking about the styles with the DAG and with the commission with you at the previous workshop, that the modern is so, you know, pretty least-desired. So we're trying to kind of limit where that can be. It's essentially going to be near the freeway now, where we have some modern buildings. And then there was a bit of a, we've heard from people both in our workshops here with you and then on the street, when we were talking to people, that people like the downtown, they do like the styles that we have down there. It's an interesting mix, and they'd like to see that, you know, sort of augmented or beefed up. And so we've looked at that and made sure that, yeah, we're going to apply more downtown styles around the downtown, too, because we have, we have developers who are interested in some of the properties around the town, downtown, so we want to make sure we're using those styles as well.
Makes sense.
If I may tag on on the discussion of market night, we did get some folks, feedback from people who didn't do the online survey. We had a couple of children who came by with their parents and, you know, filled out the forms about what they'd like to see in the future for their homes. And then we did have two council members who stopped by the booth and talked to us, and I appreciate it, there's a fact that we're out talking to the community. Got a lot of fun feedback.
Fantastic. You folks do this kind of work for other cities as well, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So looking, just looking at numbers, right? So we had ninety-two responses out of one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred population. Granted, there's, you know, household, you have to try and break that down. How does that participation look in comparison to what you've done with other cities? Are we in the ballpark? Are we, are we the mean, we low, we high?
Most of the other cities that we have worked with have not even endeavored to do this kind of level of outreach on this topic. They've been, they've run it through commissions, through subcommittees of commissions or councils. It's been very much a kind of technocratic sort of approach for a lot of the cities. It's something they have to go through. They haven't been as eager to ask the community at large their opinion. So Marietta, I think, has gone beyond any of our Southern California clients in that respect.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? I just have one comment clarifying. It is now a law that, and whether it happens or not, that a housing development can be put into the middle of a commercial district. Is that a correct statement or is it an incorrect statement?
That's, that's correct, Chair Fisher. I mean, the, really, AB 2011, which was adopted by the state last year and went into effect July first, which is part of why we did the urgency ordinance, was really a game changer in planning housing in the state. You can do an affordable housing project now in commercially zoned land, office zoned land, any land where parking lots are in allowed use. So in our case, that's also our innovation zone throughout the state, as long as you're doing an affordable project pursuant to what's in the law. So it's a significant change, and as Alan mentioned, probably all their clients who have worked with them are now calling them, saying, what do we got to do to change our regulations? So we're, in a weird way, we're kind of ahead of the curve here in getting our objective standards ready to address that situation. Obviously, we haven't had one proposed yet, but when we do, we'll have objective standards already in place for it, so.
That was my next question. Is there anything coming up that has that element?
We have not seen one yet. Yeah, there's not one that, we have not had a pre-app for one yet, but we already have the objective standards in place, and now we're refining them a little bit here, and we'll get these refinements, you know, adopted by city council, and they'll be effective in a few months, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, PlaceWorks. I appreciate your presentation. Next, we're going to move on to public testimony, and the public testimony would be opened at six forty. Are there any, Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments stating, starting with proponents, opponents, and those that are neutral?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now close the public testimony and discuss the matter amongst the commissioners at six forty-one. Any more comments from the commission? Then I would ask that it's now time to call for a motion. And a second, if we could have that, I appreciate it. Someone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission receives the staff presentation and that we record and file a notice of exemption, finding that the project is exempt from CEQA, and point two, adopt an ordinance that includes the final revised multifamily residential and mixed-use residential objective design standards and code amendments related to Development Code, Section sixteen dot oh eight dot zero four oh, sixteen dot five six dot zero two zero, and sixteen dot five six dot zero two five, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, Amending Title Sixteen of the Marietta Municipal Code to Revise the City's Development Code to Implement Multifamily Residential and Mixed-Use Residential Objective Design Standards in the Ministerial Development Plan Permit Process for Certain Qualifying Projects."
And the motion was made by Commissioner Harland. Is there a second?
Well, second to motion.
And the second is by Commissioner Veruun. Madam Secretary, can you please arrange for a call for vote?
Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Veruun.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Appreciate it very much. Let's continue on to the next public hearing, which is a developmental plan permit, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six eighty-five, and a tentative parcel map, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six eighty-six, three eight five six eight, Jefferson Marietta Apartments. Are there any members of the planning commission that wishes to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the staff presentation. Staff, do we have a report?
Good evening, Chair Fisher and Commissioners. I'm Jared Ramo with the Planning Division, here to present tonight's Jefferson Marietta for eight hundred and fifty-two units. The project site is located at the northwest corner of Marietta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson Avenue. Site is currently vacant and is zoned community commercial. Surrounding zones include commercial, multifamily, regional commercial, and business park. The development plan permit before you tonight is for an eight hundred and fifty-two unit multifamily project, which would be comprised of one, two, and three bedrooms. I want to underscore it's a market rate project. There's no affordable component with this evening's action. Let me move on. The project includes sixteen four-story residential buildings and four single-story leasing and amended buildings, for a total of twenty buildings on the property. For parking, here's tables for parcel A and parcel B, because it's a lot split. The minimum parking required for both parcels is one thousand seven hundred and seventy-two parking spaces. The project exceeds that by providing one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one spaces by nineteen spaces, if you will. This is for a combination of standard carport and garage or tuck-under. Here's some typical four plans for the one and two, three-bedroom units. These will vary among the three different architectural styles, but this is generally what you'll see. Notice that each of the residents would have a deck area, like an outdoor deck, and a pretty good interior amenities with some spacing. Per the Development Code, a project like the multifamily requires one amenity for every thirty units. So doing the math, they have to have a minimum of twenty-nine amenities. The project provides fifty-nine, as shown on the table on the left. The points give you seventy-four points, if you will, but it's fifty-nine amenities. And on the image on the right, you'll see in green areas for walkways, pools, and things that I'll get into in the next slide here. Oh, one important design feature on this project is the applicant will provide a pedestrian access point to the Spectrum Center, which is good. Because it's in a TOD, I'll get into it a little bit later, we want to promote walkability, more pedestrian focus. And if you think about this many residents next to our commercial zoning, you got, what, Mochi Nut, Starbucks, Elias Shoes, AAA, you got quite a lot of stuff that I think these residents would walk over and compliment. So I just wanted to highlight that that's a little bit of an extra, and that's smart, because we don't want people walking all the way around. We have a more secure just pathway, and that was very helpful in this proposal. For the outdoor amenities, we have two pools in separate areas. We got fire pits, totlot, dog park, baji courts, and other great amenities for the residents. For the three single-story buildings, we have business centers, mailrooms, leasing offices, bathrooms, club rooms, and other amenities for the onsite residents. And these are in three different areas of the project site. Landscaping, in our Development Code, for multifamily, you're required to have a minimum of ten percent landscaping. They exceed that providing eighteen. If you notice out there, it's vacant, and what you will see in the future is curb gutter sidewalk and nice trees on the frontage area. So we just want to highlight, it's a very robust landscape plan. It is comprised of codes of low-water plant types, consistent with state law, and the property manager will be responsible for maintaining all of the landscaping onsite. So the project is a development plan permit, but also a tentative parcel map. It's a two-lot split, so parcel A and parcel B are shown here. Parcel A would have, be about fifteen acres and would accommodate three hundred and ninety-four units. Parcel B, around sixteen acres, four hundred and fifty-eight units. Let's go into infrastructure a little bit. I'm going to go through some slides, but to start off with grading, it will be a net import of one hundred and sixteen thousand cubic yards of soil. So they'll do some cut and fill, but they will have to have a resultant of import that was analyzed in the air quality and GHG analysis and is less than a significant impact. But that was a very careful analysis, because you do want to be careful about truck trips that are associated with importing of soil, and also the bulldozers that work the site. So the project will be getting water and sewer services from Western Municipal Water District. In blue and green are shown existing lines that the project will be able to access into. Applicants have to go to the local district and provide Applicants have to go to the local district and provide a service availability forms. From that, we thread with the district to get conditions of approval. And I'd like to say that many months ago, the district did take the water assessment and passed that by resolution at their board meeting. So they're well ahead to demonstrate that they have adequate services available for this project. And some more of the infrastructure. We have two major roads that the project has frontage upon. For Murrieta Hot Springs Road, they're going to have to do curb gutter and sidewalk along the frontage. And I'll get into a little bit more detail, but this will have a new signalized access point and a new deceleration lane. Same for Jefferson, curb gutter sidewalk. We also have a new signal coming online and a new deceleration lane. Just a little bit more to highlight how people will get in and out of the site. Murrieta Hot Springs Road will have a primary access point. Jefferson will have a secondary access point, but also will have a second lane, which will be right in, right out. The project is gated for the design. So in the orange lines, if you will, I'm showing the gate that's set back from Murrieta Hot Springs Road. It's set back that far, because if you turn right before the gates, that'll be the leasing office, and they have a small parking lot. But the rest of the site is a gated access. And same with Jefferson Avenue. These were analyzed by fire and traffic. They can queue the right number of vehicles, and we feel that those are appropriate locations for the gates. So we do have electrical poles and lines on both streets. Some are 12 KV, some are 33. Let's start with Murrieta Hot Springs Road. 33 KV lines are the larger ones that you cannot just underground. That's Edison takes the lead on that one. You can relocate them, but you can't underground them for safety issues. In order for the applicant to propose a new deceleration lane on Murrieta Hot Springs Road, they're going to have to move one of the poles as shown in red. On Jefferson, those lines are 12 KV, and each of those five poles will be undergrounded. And just underscore, that's a process by which the applicant goes and works directly with Edison. We're kind of CC'd on that process, but Edison is the lead. They do make the call. So although the city has an ordinance that discusses this and the options thereof, it is really Edison as the last commenter, if you will, on the designs. The project does provide 24, 26, and 28-foot wide drive aisles on the interior of the site. This was analyzed by our fire team. It has the appropriate widths in the right areas so that we have no issue where a fire apparatus has to turn around or people have to exit while emergency responders are coming in. So although it's gated, we do have a well-thought-through surfacing component. And we also have, this will be re-reviewed upon condition satisfaction, but with fire hydrants, fuel mod zones. Although we have the benefit of the fire protection plan, it's really the applicant that will implement the conditions of approval for the project to make it sure it's safe. And then we have that process as attached to the staff report. Here's three of the architectural design styles. Irving Gill is a prominent architect back in the day. We've got contemporary and modern agrarian. And I think what you saw in the previous presentation, this project, although it came in and is not subjected to the design guidelines, from the start, we got to work with some pretty good architects, and they even progressed those plans a little bit further for us. So we can get into those a little bit more in detail. But I would like to say that typically this applicant was a little bit ahead of it and wanted to provide the city with very good architecture. And I think that's why you're seeing something similar to the objective design guidelines. As part of state law, AB 52, we do consult with our tribal governments. Morongo, Pachanga, and Rincon all requested to consult. Morongo withdrew their request. Pachanga and, and staff met at the site, and we did develop specific mitigation measures. One of the reasons for the errata tonight, and I'll go into a little bit more detail, is when we did receive the first round of conditions or mitigation measures from Pachanga, that went into the staff report, that went into the conditions in 1583. Very recently, another staff person that had returned from vacation provided us their most updated. So the errata contains a replacement of those mitigation measures. It's just more finite language. It's, it's language that when you're in the field, and if something is found, there's protocol. And that protocol is based on Public Resources Code and state law. So we want to make sure that it's very finite. Pachanga says, please just replace these, which we're doing in the errata, and they're in support of the project. So I just wanted to highlight that, that point there. And in actuality, the only historic thing that was out there was a historic barbed wire fence, and we couldn't find it. And it was kind of funny, because Pachanga, who typically doesn't look for those things, we all went and looked for it, and unfortunately, we couldn't find it. Because it was just one of those things where if there's anything that we could find historical, whether it's tribal or modern, but we couldn't. And I'm a big fan of old barbed wire, so that's why I was out there. Biological, we do have the Yoder Wash that runs through the property. The applicant is avoiding by design, meaning that they're not putting anything in it. They're going to stay out of it. There will be some necessary improvements to ensure that that's a flood-free site. But I just want to underscore that we did do a biological resource report. We did do a careful look at the edge effects. And so when the project is submitted to satisfy conditions, we're going to take a very close look at the lighting placement. We'll do a fence and wall plan to prevent access to the biological area. And so although you don't see that tonight, the project is conditioned to provide those things when we return. And I just want to let you know that we do have a borrowing hour report, and they'll still have to do a borrowing hour survey. They'll do a lease bills verisurvey as conditions next April. But from the biological side, I just want to say that they're avoiding impacts to that area. I would also add that they don't own the entirety of that Yoder Wash. There's multiple ownerships. So the property manager will be responsible for maintaining that Yoder Wash area within their property, meaning that if there's trash, things like that, unpermitted access, that's within their own legal lot, the property manager will be responsible for those. So the project is within what we know as the TOD. It's a transit development-oriented overlay district, right? And this is years back. We wanted to promote the best of densities in this area. So office and multifamily at a minimum of 30 dwelling units is what we would have within the orange line. It, it's a large area, and it didn't get too much attention until very recently. And now I'm happy to say that we're getting the right projects in this area. So although you see the zoning is community commercial, the TOD allows for multifamily when at a minimum of 30 dwellings per acre. So I just wanted to clarify, why are you guys seeing, and to Commissioner or Chair Fisher, this is a situation where our own code allows multifamily in this area on community commercial well ahead of AB 2011. So forgive me, I think, I think we got it right, because we wanted to reduce trips. We wanted some synergy with the transportation and job infrastructure wise. And I think that's why you're getting some good attention on this area. You know, we always want to make sure that when we talk about a community, is it walkable? Is, what can you do within a one-mile radius? And so this is a good illustration that there's plenty of options for folks in a walkable corridor. They can come into our downtown area. They got the senior center, they got city hall, we got the lovely parks and amphitheater. We have jobs to the south. Even across the freeway, we have a medical corridor and Hancock. Then we have a bus stop over there by Mulligan's Family Fun Center. So, and, and most of all, the retail area in Madison. I'm really looking forward to seeing a lot of those families take a good walk in the evening, go buy a smoothie or dinner. You know, and, and we may see some businesses flip because of that. Because when you, when you invigorate an area with a little bit more economic vitality, I think that's a positive injection that we'll see on Madison Avenue. Again, walkable, and we have that pedestrian access in the back. That's what I'm really gaming on, is I would like to see a lot more pedestrian use of that area. And I think that, that is what the business sector needs in that part of town. I know we've had this chat before in, in other projects about the Housing Accountability Act. It's state law. It does limit local jurisdictions on these types of projects. And so we just wanted to throw this slide up again to remind you that when the project is consistent with the local codes, we have to be very careful with our decision-making. So the project relies upon what's called 15183, and that's a, an exemption in CEQA. I want to say, though, it's, it's not like just a quick exemption. You got to work for it. You got to earn that exemption, meaning that you're doing biological, or here. You're doing bio reports, GHG and AQ. You're doing geological reports, just about everything that we can throw at a project. You're still going there, and for good reason. Along Jefferson, we have the Alcos Priolo Fault Line, and we have a small fault line on that area. So in the geoanalysis, that's what we found. We have an avoidance area along Jefferson for that. But I just want to underscore that when you hear exemption, this project still went through the rigor moral of a normal mitigated negative declaration process, in my opinion. So I'm happy to say that we do thoroughly analyze these projects, including traffic. And so I just want to underscore that exemption is a little bit of a slippery word sometimes, but I want to say that it was a very thorough and robust analysis that we put it through. We do have an errata. It does look a little thick. I just want to clarify that these are minor changes to the existing terminology. In addition, you will find in there replacements for the cultural conditions of approval. And in this day and age, you know, we have applicants where they are concerned about the litigious nature out there, and they want to make sure that they get it right. And so part of this is also to make sure that that 1583 document is legally defensible, right? I think it's well-written in its current form, but this is a way to just make sure it's, it's picture-perfect. And again, I've gone through every single change. I'm confident in briefing you tonight that those are minor changes that don't arise to any type of reanalysis or recirculation. But if you have any questions on that, please let me know. With that, we do ask for your consideration of approval of the notice of exemption and your adoption of the resolution. I am here joined tonight by other staff here, and also the applicant is in the audience. He has his technical team as well. But thank you this evening, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jarrett, for your presentation, pretty thorough presentation. Appreciate it. We'll move to the dais now and ask any commissioners if they have questions. And we'll start with Commissioner Veruun.
Thank you for the presentation, Jarrett. Just a couple of clarifications. You mentioned the pathway to shopping. Was it? Could you show, show me where that is on the map? Or is there a bridge going over the creek there, or where exactly is that?
No, good question. No, we, we, we want to avoid any impacts to biology. So what, what's really neat is that if, if you're in that back corner of, of the shopping center, it's almost flush with the level of the project site. So although we're not showing the actual gate, there's going to be a pathway and a gate. And it's pretty much almost flush. I think there's only about one or two feet of elevation change. But we will not need to go through the drainage. This is a safer access that can get them to the rear, where you have a red-curbed area. And right across is the.
Can you, can you kind of explain, or maybe a pointer? I'm trying to get my bearings here and figure out exactly where you're referring to.
Let's see if I can get an aerial here. Sorry, one second here. I don't think I have the right image for you. I'm hoping in the applicant's presentation, they might be able to provide that aerial here, but. Yeah, I think he wants an aerial to. Yeah, I, I apologize. I usually throw an aerial on this one. I goofed there, so. I apologize, Commissioner.
Generally, just from the back of the property there, opposite Jefferson Avenue, is that what you're talking about, or, or is it?
Well, where I have the arrow. See the?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I wish I had a Google shot.
Okay, got it, okay.
Then I could show you the, how, how it's prominently in the rear of that area, so.
Okay. Just a few other questions as it relates to public safety, because that's kind of obviously my background. Condition 187 on there says the project has no gates. But obviously, you said it, it did, which I think is a good thing, because I, I believe having gates on an apartment complex, especially on two major arterials, is, is a good thing. I like the deceleration, so there's not stacking. I, I like all that. I'm just wondering if we have to amend that condition to remove that first sentence?
I, I think that's prudent, and my apologies. And I just want to underscore that when a gate proposal comes back in under building permit and fence and wall plan, we do thread with fire and, and a police department on those. We, we do seek their input to make sure that that's the right design and the right location.
Sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you for, for that. Also, on, on here, I know we can't require it anymore, and we talked about this earlier this evening, but garages. Is, does this project have garages for parking secured?
You know, the project does include tuck-under. Not for every, not for all the units. I mean, it does have carport and open spaces. But, yeah, I'd like to say that this is an example of a developer has a particular clientele. And those folks would have an expectation. So I think this developer is smartly playing that, hey, these folks really would want a garage at this type of premium. So if you're going to rent something at $27.50 a month, and you have a decent car, you're going to have an expectation for a garage. So we think we're going to see with the market rate developments, continuing to provide some garages, but not like we saw in the past. But I'm happy to say that these folks are providing garage spaces as well.
That's good. I, I appreciate that. And of course, as you know, I just put this out there for, I know there's a lot of people in the audience, but Murrieta is one of the lowest in crime, you know, nationally and certainly here in the state. And one of the, one of the ways that we, you know, protect those crime rates is, you know, building design, those type of things like that. So amenities such as gates and garages and things like that prevent car thefts, car break-ins, those type of things like that, which lower the crime statistics. So, so I appreciate that. Another big question, and I couldn't find it anywhere. This is our first, if I, if I, I can recall correctly, this is our first four-story apartment complex in the city?
No. So, yeah, we approved the Adams Avenue affordable projects just down the street here a couple of years ago, and that's four stories, and it's under construction. Also, I believe the bridges might have some four-story elements. The other one that's under construction on Los Alamos. I think most of those buildings are three stories, but the Adams project, all the buildings are four stories. Yeah.
And does this project have elevators?
I believe it does, yes, and.
I'm seeing a head nod in the affirmative in the back there, so. I appreciate that, that, because that's a big one for me, especially with, you know, medical transports and our police officers getting up for, for stories. So is there a, is there a metric that, that we require here? Because we talked about earlier in the last public hearing, zero to three stories, then we go four to six, and then seven and above. So is that the trigger for four to six stories that triggered the, the need or the requirement for elevators in multifamily homes?
I think it might be three or higher. I, I wish Andy Crowe might still be here to help me on that one, but.
I, I see another. He's, he's coming.
Let's not have any comments unless you come forward during public comments, please.
That's city staff.
Andy Crowe, building official for the city.
Pardon me?
Andy Crowe, building official for the city.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so when you hit four stories, an elevator would be required for accessibility purposes.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Harland?
Thanks, Jarrett, for the presentation and, you know, the details, the preparation, the planning, the specifics. Impressive report. Just a couple of notes as I went through here. Looks like proposed 50-feet height versus 150 allowed. Setbacks within ranges, plus 19 on parking versus what was required. Traffic certainly was a concern of mine as I went through this. And for the folks that put that detailed traffic analysis together, that, I think you guys addressed it all. And it looks like there's a plan to, with action steps, to handle the increased flows. School infrastructure, you know, given the amount of, you know, folks that are there, it looks like you've got those support plans. I think the architectural style consistent with the semi-rural environments is outstanding. Looks like the fire reporting was completed. Looks like police is next. Just on the amenities, and it looks. Just on the amenities, and it looks like there's a lot of neat stuff there. The dog park, residents only?
Yeah, the project site is private, so there's no public access.
Okay. And then, Jared, I agree with you on the business boost. I think Old Town, Spectrum, all through that, especially if you make that on a walking thing. There's a lot of things in here that look really good. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wojcik?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My questions are mostly related to traffic, so I don't know if we want to bring our traffic folks up. If I understand correctly, we're not adding any additional lanes for through traffic on Jefferson, correct? It's just going to be turnoff lanes to get into the.
That's correct. The traffic lanes for, I'm sorry, you said Jefferson, right?
Jefferson, yeah.
Yeah, Jefferson will have, it'll continue to be striped, three lanes in the northbound direction, and then two lanes in the southbound direction. And in the future, the city will restripe the third lane in the southbound direction. It's wide enough to do that currently. We just don't have the volumes for the third southbound lane. The two driveways on Jefferson, one of them will be signalized, and they're building a 200-foot right turn slash decel lane. The other driveway is a right-in, right-out, and they're also building a 200-foot-long right-in, right-out, or storage pocket.
I tend to drive that way every day. Well, not every day, but mostly every day from work. And I would say at the, you know, five o'clock hour, it gets pretty backed up on Jefferson. I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around this. We have a project before us that I think there was a document that said there's a roughly 24, 2500 residents that would be there with a 17, almost 1800 parking spaces. And the number of people for this project alone is roughly 2% of our population here in the city. Then we have the project, I believe, just north of that currently being built. And I don't know how many units that is. That's before our time.
It was 160.
It's more like 250, 240, something like that. Yeah. Oh, is it only 160? I thought it was 200. Okay.
Then I go a little bit further north, and on Ivy and Jefferson, there's another project. And I don't know how many are going there.
Yeah, that's 325. That's the ranch at, yeah, Ivy and Jefferson.
So you got within a block and a half, three big projects going on. I don't know how we're going to be able to maintain traffic there. And I assume staff looked at the, I guess it's this traffic report from, is it DUDAC, DUDAC?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, they prepared a capacity analysis analyzing each of those intersections along their frontage. I think they analyzed 12 intersections for their project.
Do you agree with the findings in the report?
I do. My experience, since I've worked within this city, and my observations are that the real backup along there is in the evening peak hour at Jefferson and Calmia. Traffic backs up quite a bit right there in the northbound direction. And that's because of the narrow width of the road north of Calmia. I think that's probably a little bit worse than this location.
It is.
We do currently have interconnect underground between each of the signals along Jefferson, actually, every intersection in the city. And we can control the timing of those intersections from the traffic room at City Hall. So once this new signal goes in on Jefferson and the one that goes in on Myriad Hot Springs, we're going to be, the city will be implementing a timing plan for the weekday morning commuter peak period and the weekday evening commuter peak period, so that the signal, so that it'll flow better during those peaks.
In terms of the placement of the signals, like, let's take Myriad Hot Springs, because we have Madison and Myriad Hot Springs as a signal. And then just west of that, we have Jefferson and Myriad Hot Springs with a signal. So this signal that's going to be installed on Myriad Hot Springs, do you know roughly how the distance between the signals currently?
I was anticipating this question. It's roughly somewhere between 500 and 600 feet. So there will be a 200-foot storage pocket into the center, and there will still be at least 200 feet of storage for westbound vehicles turning southbound on Jefferson from Hot Springs. So something important to note here, though, is that right now that's a T-intersection at Myriad Hot Springs and Jefferson.
Right.
And with our last general plan update, Hawthorne, which is the extension of Myriad Hot Springs Road, used to be classified as an arterial roadway. Well, based on our general plan volumes for 2040, that roadway got degraded down to a secondary road from a six-lane to a four-lane road. So it's significantly lower volumes west of there. So this is kind of like the end of a, the section right here of Myriad Hot Springs is kind of like the end of a urban arterial.
If I'm traveling, let's say I'm traveling south on Jefferson, and I'm coming from Calmia. I guess potentially I would have a light at Calmia I could hit. Then I go a couple hundred feet, I have another traffic light that's going to be newly installed. Then I'm going to have a traffic light at Jefferson and Myriad Hot Springs. And then if I turn left on Myriad Hot Springs and start going east, I'm going to have a potential another light there, and then one at the corner of Madison and Myriad Hot Springs. So I could potentially hit all those lights, right? Right in that little corner?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know much about traffic reports, so I got a couple of questions on the traffic report. It talks about delay, and anytime I see the word delay, that just all of a sudden, you know, your ears perk up, right? And it has numbers about AM delays and PM delays. And the delays it talks about is anywhere, it ranges from 7 to 46 in the AM. And it looks like the numbers are roughly the same in the PM. Can you tell me what that means? It's in the DUDAC report, it's Table 9.
Yeah, the Table 9, Phase 1, Opening Year, 2026, Weekday Peak Hour Intersection LOS.
Just generally, I don't know what that means. I just.
So delay is measured in terms of level of service with letter grades A through F, A being free-flowing traffic, F being gridlock. We have, as a city, the city council in the general plan adopted acceptable levels of service at intersections. So the city allows up to level of service D, so ABC or D. If anything's E or F, then there are requirements for improvements to be made at the intersection.
Okay.
Every intersection for the two, so there was an analysis for the Phase 1 development and the Phase 2 development, the total development. And with their mitigation, with the signals, the turn lanes, everything was shown to operate at level of service D or better.
So D is passing?
D is passing.
Wow.
These are.
It's a good school to go to.
I think you're allowed a couple Ds in school.
There's a comment in their report, and I'm on page four. I'll just read it.
Under VMT.
Yeah. And it says, "The proposed project would develop more than the quantity of residential units assumed in the general plan update." Do you know what they mean by that?
I do. In the general plan update, that zone or TAS had assumed both commercial and residential development. So now that, some of that commercial development is getting replaced with residential development, which is typically a little bit lower generator and traffic than commercial.
Okay. They made a comment in their report, "Based on this analysis," meaning the report, "the project would not create any new impacts to the daily MPM peak hour conditions." Can you reconcile that with me? Because there's going to be a lot of traffic there. How's it not going to impact it?
That's just saying that the intersections, as they are planned to be designed in the roadways, will be able to accommodate the traffic at an acceptable level of service determined by the city. Yeah, so just to provide a little context, Brian and I worked on this together on the general plan. So there's sort of like a level of traffic that the general plan foresees for roads and for intersections. And when they're looking at VMT, they're looking at that sort of assumed amount. So obviously, to the layperson, you build an 850-unit project, there's more traffic, right? But is it more traffic than we thought we'd see based on what we did in the general plan update? And that's the analysis they're looking at. And we just implemented VMT with the general plan update. And so that's, they have to kind of reconcile that. That's why they have to do that sort of analysis.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And then the final comment in this report, it says, "To study intersections analyzed in the GPU, 2035 TIA would remain at level of service at D or better." I guess that's passing. Except the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Myriad Hot Springs Road, which is forecast to operate at level of service E in the AM peak hour.
Yes.
Explain why we're allowing an E or accepting an E?
Yeah, because if we have an intersection that is forecast to operate at a level of service E for general plan, and then we add in the project, if it goes from an E to an E, and incrementally, we add only a few extra seconds of delay, the city determined at council with the last general plan update that we have a significance threshold. So it's not like it's going from just turning to an E to almost an F. It's just going slightly above the E. We allow, I think it's an additional five seconds of delay.
When the report was prepared, I didn't see it in there, but it could have been in there. Did it take into account these other projects that are currently being built?
Yes, and we asked them to update the study after it was just about to be approved one last time to add in a number of other cumulative projects that had come online since they started the study. So they actually added, there were a total of 29 cumulative projects that they added in there. The one across the street that's still in the planning process, the Triangle Project, and 27 other projects.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have a couple of questions. This is going to be a two-lot split. Does that mean that the development will not be encompassing the entire 834 units, and it'll be split between the 394 and 468?
Correct. The footprint will have those unit counts with parcel A and parcel B. I believe the applicant is doing that for mainly financing purposes. So it'd be one project, one property manager, two legal lots.
And they'll be developed at different times?
Yeah, the applicant may come in with a phasing plan, and they may want to look at Phase 1, Phase 2, parcel A, parcel B. We do often see that. Typically, it's for financing purposes. It's hard to build this many buildings at once. It's smarter to maybe peel off half of them. By the time you're done with the first half, you get the financing for the second, then you build out the second. So we'll see if the applicant comes with a phasing plan. I think the goal right now is to build out the whole site. But with the economy and financing, we'll see more information probably this fall from them.
Do we have any idea how many truck trips there will be with the grading and the input of that much dirt?
Yeah, we have that calc that's in the air quality and GHG analysis. I believe it's one truck trip for 10 cubic yards. We have 110,000 cubic yards of import. So it's a number of trucks, if you will, that would come to the site and off. With the staging, with the timing, we're able to demonstrate that that would not have an impact upon the air quality basin from emissions from those vehicles. But we have the calc. I just don't have that in front of me. I apologize.
Will most of the grading accessibility be on Jefferson for this project or Myriad Hot Springs?
You know, forgive me, I may have to rely upon the applicant and their presentation. I think they're going to stage it from Jefferson, but forgive me, I might not have the most current information.
The only thing I'm saying is that the current project that's being developed there has shut down lanes pretty regularly to get out to the street to get the connections that they needed, plus the building of that with the cranes and everything. Is this going to be a major delay on Jefferson for most of the people traveling on Jefferson, going probably north rather than south?
There'll be some similar activities. You know, there is a need to put in the water and sewer infrastructure. They're going to have to underground the power lines. So there will be some closures as needed, as you've seen with the current project Jefferson 160 out there. They do come in with a traffic control plan. We do look at the hours and intensity of that use, but there will be some limited delays for the public during construction.
I need you to clarify for me that the blue dots are not going to be underground, but yet the green dots are going to be underground. Explain that to me, why they couldn't all be underground?
No, thank you, Chair. So when we talk about Myriad Hot Springs Road, I wish I had an aerial, sorry. You see the much taller, formal transmission lines? Those are 33 KV and higher. So those are the types of facilities that you cannot place underground. They're too hot, too big, too bad. And Edison, who takes lead on that, just, their policy is not to underground those for safety issues. So we have different transmission lines. We have a 33 KV on Myriad Hot Springs Road. So the red dot just shows the one pole that has to be relocated for the deceleration lane. Versus Jefferson, now Jefferson has the smaller poles or smaller voltage lines, if you will. They're 12 KV. Those can be undergrounded. And so the project that's before you is conditioned to underground those five poles. And they'll be working with Edison directly on that process.
And there's.
Oh, sorry. It's really the difference of the KV voltage. When you're 33, you can't go underground. When you're less than 33, you can. And so, but sometimes what we'll see is we'll have two different lines on the same pole. You might have 33 KV and 12. We'll ask the 12 KV be undergrounded, but you'll still retain the 33. So you might notice that there's different transmission lines in any community that have multiple voltage lines on those poles. But we happen to only have the 12 KV on Jefferson.
And who regulates that, did you say?
Yeah, Edison, SoCal Edison. They take the lead on that. Or SoCal Edison.
All right. Where on this map that's in front of us, the utility poles, one has to be relocated. Where is it being relocated to? And from?
Yeah, so they just have to pull it back so that we can have the decel lane and then beyond the curb gutter and sidewalk. So we'll pivot it back onto, or within the right-of-way, onto the property, if you will.
So it'll generally stay in the same location, but be moved back?
Correct.
Okay. On the architectural of these, of this development, we just talked about standards, development standards. Yet I don't see any of these three being part of what we already agreed upon as far as our development standards. Explain that a little bit to me?
Yeah, the project that's before you tonight came in in 2022. That was before city council and planning commission took action on the objective design guidelines. So legally, we can't apply that to these folks. But conversely, these applicants stepped up with a better architectural style from the beginning. They worked with us on multiple rounds of changes. So although it's not the same as what you guys have appreciated from Placeworks, we believe that this adheres to what the goals are for finding good designs for our community. So I would lend that, that these are fairly good designs, in my opinion. We've talked about it at the staff level, especially the modern agrarian. That's very well-received by communities. We're finding that's very popular. And also, the mix is good to have the contemporary Irving Gill styles. But although it's not subjected to our current guidelines, they did a good job, in my opinion, as a planner.
Okay, thank you. How about drainage? This big, this larger project, I'm sure that there is a plan for the drainage?
Yeah, Commissioner, we're going to pull up Rick Elzaga, our senior civil engineer. He worked methodically on the stormwater management plan and drainage analysis.
Good evening, Chair Fisher. So like every project, all drainage is considered. And also, there's a water quality component to all projects. So this project as well, well, everything drains generally toward the east, where you have the channel on the back end. And it will be routed, captured, treated, and then released, control-released into that channel as well.
So on a project like this, there will be no, I'm trying to think of the drainage that you see on projects where the drainage is, you allow for a drainage channel to be on the property. This is not the case?
This project does not have a drainage channel. There is existing drainage outlet. There's storm drain within the public right-of-way that outlets onto the property, and it flows toward the east. So that will be piped and routed through the site. But as far as channels go, no channels will be created for the project. But there will be. be basins, if you will, that will again capture, treat, and then control release that water. And, and also currently drains from, from the west Jefferson toward the east, and it will continue to do, to do the same thing.
How does the Yoder Wash impact drainage, if it does?
So the, the quick answer is it does not, because again, control release is, it's analyzed in its existing condition, whatever those flows are. And then whatever the post-development design is, we ensure that whatever, wherever and whatever that volume of water is, it is less than what is existing.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Burrowing owl report and survey, are you saying that that has to continue, that it is not complete at this point?
Yes, so we have two things. We ask that an applicant perform a burrowing owl survey with the project. So during discretionary, we'd like to see what plants and species are on the property. But there can be a, a length of time that changes between, say, tonight and actual construction. So projects are required that no earlier than three days, but no later than 30 days, they shall perform another burrowing owl survey prior to grading, because burrowing owl will take over those squirrel holes, and they can show up anytime, right? So you got to be very careful. It's a protected species. So every project that we have that's a grading permit is required to do a burrowing owl survey. Now, if they find burrowing owl, there's methodology where they can relocate them, but it's very important that we condition projects. And then it's very important that we know what the habitat is going in, because that's indicative. If you have burrowing owl today, you're going to have it during construction. If you don't have it today, you might have it during construction. So there's a fail-safe mechanism. Plus, that's a regional request that comes from our MSHCP. We have an MOU that binds us to require the burrowing owl survey twice.
And you're saying that the tribal resources have all come together and agreed on this project?
Yeah, we had a great consultation process, specifically Pachanga and Rincon. We did a site visit with Pachanga staff. We looked at the Yoder Wash very carefully. I, I think a lot of times it's where items could have been part of a historical trail, like Los Alamos Road, right? And over time in history, things could have fallen on the sides of the roads. So one thing is that during grading operations, if there's an inadvertent find, something that wasn't thought to happen, it could be like a lithic or quartz or something, that's important. We'll have a tribal monitor during grading operations so that if there are any resources found, we have protocol in place to identify that. So we do have support from Pachanga, Pachanga, given the updated conditions that we've entered with the Arata. So we had a very good, respectful consultation process. I'm happy to say that's what led to the mitigation or the conditions that are before you.
Well, that's, that's very good to hear. Two ques- two more questions. Explain to me why this is an exemption of CEQA?
Yeah, so the California Environmental Quality Act allows for different types of exemptions. It also allows for different pathways, like mitigated negative decks and environmental impact reports. One of the least used tools by planners is the use of the 15183. It came out many, many years ago. I used it, I think, eight or nine years ago as a planner in a different jurisdiction. What you're saying is that you've done all the environmental analysis, but you're also saying that the project is consistent with the general plan? You are making a finding on that tonight by adopting the 15183. The 15183, unlike other exemptions, like if you get a pool permit or a little ADU, you know, there's normal little easy exemptions, which means that we don't get into this kind of analysis. The 15183 requires you to do a more in-depth analysis to back up your general plan. So in essence, I would compare this to a mitigated negative declaration without the public review. But we did do an earnest effort with the tribal governments, with the resource agencies. So I believe that even though we didn't have that type of formal process, the 15183 requires you to substantiate that in the record to the hearing body. And I think that's how, that's why we're so thorough i- in, in the 15183 document. That's a thick document that backs up the one sheet exemption.
Okay. Last question is, there are 852 units proposed, four stories in height. What percentage of that would be, and they're all apartments, correct? There's no condominiums in there, just apartments?
This is just rental.
What's the percentage of low income within that project?
This will just be market rate. There will be no affordable units as part of this project.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers to the questions, and I appreciate the Commissioner's questions.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one more question of our traffic engineer based upon something that Commissioner?
Sure. Go right ahead.
... brought up. So the traffic signals, obviously the ones that are going in, they're pretty much at this point in time exclusive to this project, or it looks like it. There's not anything on the other, other side.
The one on Jefferson will be directly across from, I believe it's JNW Lumber and another approved apartment project. So that'll be a four-legged intersection.
Okay, so, and it'll have protected left-hand turns on the Jefferson side?
Yes.
So are those traffic signals set up or for people exiting the project? If they're making a right turn only, would it, would it trip the signals? Or maybe you could kind of explain the, if, if nobody pulls up to the intersection for seven minutes, then the signals remain green, I, I would assume?
That's, that's a great question, and this actually just came up with the three signals that were just constructed for the Kaiser Development. Same exact question. How we handle that is if there's a high number of right turners during the design process, we make sure that we have a separate loop where the right turners would sit in the pavement. We can put a delay in the traffic signal cabinet on that loop. So normally, we put about a 10-second delay. So if somebody's sitting on that loop for under 10 seconds, it's not even, the signal isn't going to register that it needs to change to green for that right turner, because a lot of times you can stop and go. If it's more than 10 seconds, then it places a call into the signal, and when, depending on the timing that's in the controller, it, it'll cycle through to allow green for that movement after the 10 seconds.
So, so someone exiting left turn, obviously it would trip the signal, but somebody not necessarily, only if they're there for an extended period of time, it would?
Yes.
For a right turn?
Yes. And because of the-
And you can manipulate that as far as how many seconds? So you say 10 seconds, but it could go longer?
We could.
I guess my point is, is that, and you brought up a good point with, you know, there, there's going to be a lot of traffic on Mirada Hot Springs and a lot of traffic, and it seems like every, so many feet, you hit another signal, especially on Jefferson. So any way to kind of continue the, the, the flow of traffic, the better, if you will, but I'm just wondering, right turn signals is 10 seconds, you know, it trips the signal and shuts down traffic everywhere as opposed to?
That'll, so that'll, that'll occur during the time periods of day that are not during the peak periods. During the peak periods, those signals will be in coordination. Right now, all of Mirada Hot Springs Road from Jefferson down to Via Princess at east are in coordination during times of day. And that's the morning commuter peak period when people are headed towards the freeways, and the afternoon when they get off the freeways and go home. So these two signals will be coordinated with those other signals, and they'll have roughly 130-second cycle for the main through movements on, on the roads. So you're, they're not going to change right away during the peak periods. If it's more sporadic flow during the noon hour or, or when it's a little bit lighter traffic, then it'll trigger it quicker.
But if nobody was coming in and out of the complex?
It'll stay green on the main line.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any more questions to the staff? Time? It's time for the applicant to give a presentation. Is the applicant here to give a presentation? Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Fisher, Planning Commissioners, Caston Klein, Caston Klein Consulting, 25715 Hayes Avenue, Murrieta. Mailing address PO Box 747, Murrieta. Let me begin by first congratulating and recognizing Andy Krog as the permanent official, building official, and Carl Steele being named the planning manager. Tonight, my client, William Morrison with JPI Companies, is here to give a presentation to the Planning Commission. And as Jarrett had message, had messed, had mentioned, we have our entire development team. But I would also like to recognize the other members of staff that work very diligently and very efficiently with us in this comprehensive design. Jarrett, Rick Alzaga, Brian, the entire staff, as well as the staff at Placeworks, who we worked with on the design of the architecture. So I'll turn it over to William. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The applicant has a 15-minute time limit for your presentation, and then a 10-minute rebuttal if necessary.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff and Kazin. That was a great accolade for staff. We'd have, it's been quite a bit of time, and we believe we have a better project because of the work with staff and Placeworks. So we're JPI Companies and JPI California Construction, so we are also the developer and we are the builder, and we are part of a local team. We are building right now at Jefferson Menefee. We just came out of the ground with Sticks, and some of our team members are here, the guys in the picture. We have Paul and Sammy, and if you guys could raise your hands, they're part of that team. I mean, Juan's here, so they're working local. We have Jefferson Whitewood in Murrieta around the corner. That is right now in for permits. And then we have what's in front of you tonight was Jefferson Avenue, the 852 units, which we're trying to change and, and name into Jefferson 395 because of the historic road out front. I know you guys have that referenced in some of your documents. So why are we here? There's a community commitment, and we really build a community. The city itself has done a great job with the city hall. It's been here for a little while, and the new amphitheater you guys have done. Staff already mentioned this evening about the downtown Murrieta specific plan. We feel we're part of that because we're right next door to it. I have a history working with my local nonprofits doing the merchants and property associations. So I'm really happy to see this Murrieta 395, which is reinvigorating the, the investments you guys have made into that stretch of the Old Town with the screech gate and stuff, and it, it looks fantastic. So we do our own market analysis, and we feel like we're part of downtown Murrieta. And as Jarrett mentioned, the synergy between our residence and the commercial zone that's there, and that passageway between us and the Murrieta Spectrum where straight on to the, where the AAA is, which should be in access, we're walking distance to Old Town, we're walking distance to this amphitheater. We're doing improvements on the streets to make that walkability that staff really wanted, and we believe we're creating a community that's just going to make this a, a better and stronger area. What we do, Jarrett mentioned, we do Class A market rate apartment communities. Just want to give you a little bit of flavor on like the quality we do. We do, we do a high-end, we do premier apartment features that, do that Class A. We do a lot of resort-style community amenities, so all the amenities that Jarrett went over, the pool and the dog park and the bocce. And then we also have in some areas, kids' rooms next to the yoga studios inside the community room. So we really create that high-end resort-style amenities, so that Class A product. And we really focus on property management. That's important to us because the residents are our residents and they're part of our community, so we really overemphasize that. So each phase will be staffed to this level with a property manager, then the leasing team and the lifestyle coordinator, and then the maintenance team to make sure everything's running well, because we want a clean, well-run community. We want the residents to be able to come in and talk to us and be able to feel safe and secure as well as create a community, because people are moving to that new development and may not know anybody there. So at JPI, we go a little bit above and beyond, and we integrate with this entity called Apartment Life. So we have people from Apartment Life that we hire as residents, and they live there, and they do that engagement. They do that welcoming committee. They do that resident engagement. So people stop becoming strangers because they've just moved in, and they create that community. So we take great pride in that, and that really is supported by that Class A from the amenities and what we build, as well as the way we treat our residents. So what, some of the things that Jarrett went over tonight, we spent a little bit of time and got some prettier pictures. So what we've done with the city, we've been coordinating the city since 2021. We're very fortunate when staff brought up that you were doing these objective design guidelines for the multifamily, you said, well, we want to work with Placeworks. They're the ones doing that for you. That's one of our options. We want to make sure we're integrating. We're a bit ahead of it. We want to make sure our design and our ideas are integrating. And I feel that our, our architect there, some of the dialogue we had with staff may have helped produce a better objective design guidelines, because we were doing it kind of concurrently. So I, I feel that was a great benefit. So we've been working with the city for quite some time, and we know we have a better product because of the collaboration and coordination. One of the items that Jarrett brought up is the garages. So one of the past requirements was these standalone garages. And we're saying the standalone garages are a problem. One of the meetings we had, we had with FIRE, and FIRE was saying standalone garages are a problem because people are hoarders and things go wrong. And we say, well, we need to solve that problem to see how to solve another problem. I'm sure staff has come through and told you about the new green energy code and those design guidelines. Creating 50% of your energy usage onsite would make for very ugly garages. So the carports are the best solution, because you're going to have to put a lot of solar panels onto the project. Staff worked with us, they said, we need that all integrated to the interior of the project so it's not visible from passerby. So anything that could be ugly is not visible to the community. So we actually feel like we designed a really good carport system. I'm sure staff will work with us while we go through the building permit process to refine that, but we felt we came up with a great solution. A lot of this carport system on the, the poles that you see there supports, that's where a lot of the EV chargers will be, because they can't all be in the tuck-under garages. They have to be out for van, ADA accessibility and such, because we have to do a lot of EV chargers. We're looking at the code minimums, the 5%, or as they said, 6% is where it's going. You have to make another 15% EV ready, so plumbed power and everything. So we're looking at how to create a better community by making, maybe making that an investment upfront, but we're still analyzing that. So the site plan, we did get a prettier picture. So sorry, Jarrett, I didn't get that into your presentation. So you can see the over amenization, the pools. I know it's a lot to read with the landscape, but we put this in here so we can go on to the next, which was talking about all our amenities and that Murrieta Spectrum connection. I wanted to jump in there and try to throw that, but I knew I'd get to it in my presentation. We worked with Jack Lee, the owner of the Irvine Spectrum, I mean, farming the Murrieta Spectrum, and to make that connection. It's a little further into the site due to the grade differential, but we're connecting to areas in his parking lot where it's an easier connection across right to the, right to the other sidewalks through some ADA, existing ADA pathways. So he's pretty excited about that, and we got a letter of support from him on, on that. And I know it's going to, for me, I, me and my family probably would come through there, walk through a site and go over to Mulligan's, because that seems like a pretty decent place to go and a pretty easy walk, once you cut through that shopping center. So we were able to get some renderings done to show you what this looks like. And this is right there at the intersection of Murrieta Hot Springs Road and our entrance. You can see we do have some gating in there. We use the building perimeter as a security perimeter and gating during the other openings. So when you come in here, the gate is set back, as, as Jarrett said, because we need to get the, the future tenants in without having to go through a gate and talk to the leasing office, and also helps with our stacking and queuing into the intersection. So then we have our amenities space inside with the pool, and that's what you'd see when you drive in through the gate. You get to see this wonderful amenity. This is down Jefferson Avenue, coming down north. So this is what you would see at the, at the far north end, and that would be that driveway there, just to the right of the slide. And then Murrieta Hot Springs and Jefferson Avenue looking north. So that's what that intersection looked like. So it's really bringing that pedestrian orientation back to the street, not walling it off, not fencing it off, but creating that walkability and that flow and, and having a really good landscape setback and buffer. So we're pretty excited about that. I have my, my team, my associates from JPI here. I also have my design team and my technical studies team, but staff did such a fantastic job. I don't know if there's any other answers we could give at this time, but I'd like to open it up to Q and A if you have any, and reserve the rest of my time for any type of rebuttal.
Bring it up here to the dais. Do we have any commissioners with questions to the applicant?
Just one. You mentioned the garages. How many, how many garages out of the entire project, roughly, if you know?
Chris, any architect could give us that exact number for the tuck-under?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Feinhold, architect for the client. There are 348 garages on site, so little, greater than one-third of the apartment units. That is not including the carports.
And then how many carports, then?
They give you that answer in two seconds.
A lot, there's, due to the solar rec- A lot. There, uh, due to the solar requirements, there's a lot of carports. Uh, we're producing shade, the needed shade, as well as the needed power structures, but?
465 carport spaces. You're probably doing the math right now. Thank you.
Our, uh, dog park options are a little bit limited. I think including that in your, uh, community as well as the spa is, uh, is certainly going to be attractive. And I found having that residential ambassador to bring a sense of community together, well done. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. You know, the project looks nice. I like the different designs. Uh, we've had some designs that have come before us and frankly, it looks like a commune. Um, but your, your, uh, project doesn't look like that at all. So thank you for that. Um, just a couple of questions. I- in a project such as this, when you have 800-plus apartments, typically how many, uh, let's say children ages 12 and under would end up residing there?
Uh, I couldn't really give you that, that number off the top of my head, but, um, in the school analysis, they give you that kind of rationale. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I know that, uh, the school has a generation factor.
I, um, my daughter and her husband lived in apartment in, uh, Laguna Beach. They had a little, little guy, um, in there and, um, it, you know, their apartment was fairly small, you know, six, 800 square feet, whatever it was. And, um, I can tell that, um, he had to release his energy, right? And, um, and I like how you have a kids' room here. But I think it'd be beneficial to probably have like a park with swings or something at this complex because it seems like everything's, uh, addressed for people that really aren't kids other than the kids' room and the pool. But, you know, you can use the pool only so many times a year, you know, winter time and stuff you can't. And these kids need to burn energy. And I don't think there's a park close by. Am I mistaken on that? I can't think of one close by. Probably a mile away at least. But, um, it'd be nice if they had something like that. So, I mean, if that's something you could consider adding instead of, uh, I don't know, maybe readjusting something, um, that'd be nice. I do like how you have this community lausanne that is like a welcoming, welcoming, welcoming committee. That's nice. The, um, I know there's exceptions, but generally, what, what's your shortest lease term that you, you use with these residents?
Usually 12 months is the shortest.
Usually one year. So they have a time to get to know their neighbors and be part of the community?
We, we shoot for the, the two-year lease term, you know, when we, when we start off, but 12 months is usually the minimum.
Has, have you guys had any contact with the school district in terms of, is there going to be an issue there with, uh, schools being to accommodate whatever number of kids you're going to end up bringing?
We've did, uh, the required reach out and, and asking like what the fees are and, and, and that, but no sit-down with school districts.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Nice project.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, I believe you've got a great project here. I just wonder if you couldn't add another 10 amenities?
One of, one of our guys did want to put in pickleball, but we really, we, yeah, we couldn't find.
Hey, it's popular today.
I know. He's, I think he invested in a professional pickleball league at one point in time.
A very good presentation and it looks like a great project. And, uh, certainly it's going to be, uh, close to the retail aspect of it. So it's going to be a, a back and forth kind of situation where people can easily get to the retail, uh, community on Madison. So I like the way that you've incorporated that walkway. So thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. And you will have time for a rebuttal if you need it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. It is now time to open the public testimony and hear from the public on this project. And we're opening up the public testimony at 8:48? Or, I'm sorry, 7:55. I'm sorry. 8:48. Wow. I hope we're out of, no, never mind. Yeah, mountain time. Uh, Madam Secretary, do we have any comments?
Uh, we do. We have, uh, speaker slips, all in favor. I will say the names. I know some of them are here just to answer questions, but I'll go through the names. If they want to pass, um, they can pass and then just walk up to the podium if they'd like to speak. Um, so we have Dennis Pasqua. Okay. Erin Morrison. Amy Grant. Tina Lee. Paul. Hedy Yama. Sean Bloomfield. Sean, Sam Gonzalez. Juan Correa. Paul. Dragovich. Ryan Weber. Nolan Adams. Seth Doris. Maria Delwich. And that is all the speaker slips we have.
That's all the speakers?
Yes.
I hear a lot of support.
Indeed.
Are there, are there any neutrals or negatives?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Did any one of those individuals want to address by coming to the podium? Or are you satisfied with the way in which it was done? I'm assuming with nobody moving to the podium that you're fine. So I'm going to close public comments at 7:56. And now, Madam Secretary, um, I, I guess it, right now would be the applicant's rebuttal time. And I don't know if there's any rebuttal necessary based upon what the audience has commented on. Everybody seemed to be in favor of the project. So you, no rebuttal from the applicant?
Correct.
See, you did such a good job. Nothing to rebut, right? All right. Uh, we're now going to, uh, close, uh, again, the public testimony, uh, at 7:55. And, um, we'll bring it up here. Is there any discussion or debate or anything on this project that you'd like to talk about? All right. It's now time to call for a motion. And so can I ask, uh, one of our commissioners to make a motion? I'll make the motion if you want. Yeah. Number one, the, consider and approve the notice of exemption for projects consistent with a community plan or zoning pursuant to the guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act called CEQA, Section 15183 of Title 14, Division 6, Chapter 3 of the California Code of Regulations and the Public Resources Code, Section 21083.3. And number two, adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Murrieta approving development plan permit 2022-2685 and a tentative parcel map, number 2022-2686, in parentheses, 38568, for construction of an 852 multifamily units and the subdivision of 31.69 gross acres into two parcels and associated off-site improvements located northeast of the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Murrieta Hot Springs Road, APN 949-670-008, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A as found in Attachment 1. That motion is made by Chair Fisher.
I'll second the motion.
And the second is made by Commissioner Harland. Uh, Madam Secretary, can we call for a vote, please?
Chair Fisher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Vroman.
Aye.
Commissioner Boychek.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously 4-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I appreciate it. I now ask for any city planner comments?
Yeah, just the, uh, the Planning Commission has rendered a decision tonight and, uh, this opens up a 10-day appeal period. Uh, anybody interested in filing an appeal can contact me, the city planner, or come to our planning counter to file an appeal. Thank you very much, Chair. I'll send it back to you.
Any comments from our city attorney, please?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight. Any other further comments from any of the commissioners? Then I will call for a closure of this meeting. Uh, if there are no objections, uh, well, no further business. I ask for consensus to join the meeting, which you gave me. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.